You're holding the switch?
Yeah.
I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Raton City Commission to order. Can we have roll call, Disry?
Sure. Mayor Protem Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez.
Present.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Present.
And Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
We all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we have some visitors tonight. And if anyone has anything that is not regarding what's already on the agenda, one, please sign in, and two, you can speak now, otherwise hold off till that item is presented on the agenda. I'm feeling a little weak voiced, so I'm going to ask the people in the hallway to kind of tone it down, if you don't mind.
So Mayor Protem, do you think that Mr. Ferry did have something for the commission? Mr. Ferry, did you want to address the commission?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. This is what happens when you get your grandkids.
That's...
That's all I could find.
Yeah. For the record, could you state your full name?
Frank Ferry.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, Commissioners Scott, thanks for giving me this opportunity to speak. First, I'd like to wish our mayor Neil Sagata a speedy recovery as he recuperates from open heart surgery in Arizona. Let's all remember Neil and his family in our prayers. I believe at this special time of year, we need peace on earth and goodwill towards men more than ever. This was first heard on that glorious night, the first Christmas in Bethlehem, and is still so true today. Our world, especially our country and even our hometown, could use peace and goodwill. I know that sometimes sitting on this commission or on one of the city boards can feel like a thankless job. Even so, you keep doing the job, doing the best you can, serving the public, giving up your time and trying to make a positive difference. To me, that's patriotic. I'm thankful for that and thankful that I live in Raton as well. I can pick up the phone and call any city department, whether it's RPS, Raton Water Works, Street Department, Police Department, whoever, and I get to talk to a real, live city employee, imagine that, who is ready and willing to help. I don't get put on hold or referred to another town, state, or country. It's handled locally. In less than an hour, the trucks are rolling and help is on the way. Small-town customer service, what a concept. We have dedicated crews who keep the lights on, decorate the town for the holidays, keep the award-winning water flowing, keep the city parks groomed, watered, and clean, haul the trash, repair streets, protect us by enforcing the law, putting out fires, and taking the injured and sick to the hospital. This goes on daily by our local dedicated city employees, mostly unnoticed. I think they all deserve peace and goodwill shown to them for all that they do. And I'd like to close with a saying an old cowboy friend of mine always uses. May God bless you and your families and all the horses you ride. So thank you guys for your time and Merry Christmas to everybody. Thank you.
On that first note you made, I spoke with the mayor's wife a little bit ago, and she said he is progressing slowly, but he's doing well. So we do wish him a speedy recovery. All right. Our next December 28th, 2021 commission meeting will be canceled as adopted in the annual open meeting resolution. All city offices will be closed December 24th and the 31st in observance of both Christmas and New Year's. Our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, January 11th, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. And now we have a proclamation. I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Chavez.
Commissioners, let me bring the team in.
Could you bring them in?
Bring them in.
Bring them in.
This proclamation is for the Raton Tigers football team and district champions.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you grab a chair, you can just kind of stand around anywhere you find place. We're happy you're all here. Come on in. Squeeze in the best you can.
Hey, come up in front, you can come over here.
Come on in, guys, you can get up here in front, you can stand around.
Get some guys right here.
Just stand over there. Right there, or over here. We don't bite.
That's right.
Come over here.
Get some in the front here.
They need it all.
Come right over here.
We've got all the ugly coaches in here, too?
This is Jacomo.
This is Jacomo.
Okay. Whereas the Raton Tigers varsity football team coached by Tori Jacomo, Billy Pierre, Brock Walton, Cody Aon, Jeremy Toping, Justin Materano, and Richard Main, holding the number-one rank in coaches poll and the max preps for many weeks. And whereas the Raton Tigers varsity football team went undefeated, 10-0 for their regular season and 4-0 in district, earning in the district championship for the first time since 2009. Whereas the Raton Tigers varsity team went on to compete in the state football playoffs in Santa Fe and ended the season with an 11-1 record for the first time since 1993. And whereas the Raton Tigers varsity football team plays a key role in Raton by promoting community spirit, leadership, sportsmanship, and encourages and supports all teams and individuals to make a commitment to excellence. And whereas the Raton Tigers varsity football team must demonstrate a commitment to teamwork, sportsmanship, and discipline. And whereas the Raton Tigers varsity football team's trip to state playoffs was a great experience for the team, and they received great fan support. Therefore, does Lindy Schuster, the Mayor Protem, declare December 21 as Raton Varsity Football Team Month. City of Raton and the surrounding communities and asks the people for our communities to express pride in these young athletes and thank them for a job well done by bringing honor to their schools and the communities through their achievements. The witness, therefore, she has put her signature to this proclamation. We're proud of you guys, all of you.
We're very proud of you.
And we'd like to have you, Mr. Jacomo's going to present this to the team and the coaches out in the lobby. If you'll all go out there so we can get a couple of pictures with you.
Thank you.
Hey, George.
I've got some Raton City pins or something for the guys.
Oh, I could have done that.
Stickers or...
But no, you guys just wanted to talk.
I have pins and pins.
Give them a hug.
They're still taking pictures out there.
Parents are there.
Yeah. All right. We should have done these in reverse order. All right. The next item on the agenda is equally as important and filled with pride. We have a U-Rock Award to present, and it is... The Mayor and City Commission of Raton proudly present a certificate of recognition to Sue Downing in memory of Dennis Downing, in acknowledgement of being an outstanding citizen with unwavering efforts to be a true ambassador for Raton. You and your husband worked hard, I know you did, and I'm sorry that this is posthumously for him, but I know you were right there with him, and, excuse me, but you're bringing tears to my eyes. Come on over here and let's get a picture. This is your U-Rock.
It's not like I don't have any rocks in my house. That was Dennis' next thing was gemology.
I know. And this is your...
Oh, thank you.
All right. So thank you.
Very good. Well, it's a pleasure, and we will keep on doing. Museum is closed, and thank God it's liquidated, but I have 14 showcases if anybody needs one. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Let's get a smile for it.
Yeah. Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I always get items from citizens present out of order, so if there are any more items from citizens present, you can move forward now. But looking out at the crowd, I think we can move on to item 6A. Deliverate an act on approval of minutes from a regular meeting on November 23rd.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
One second.
It's been moved in second to approve the minutes of November 23rd. Any additional comments? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. All right. Deliverate an act on the 2022 holiday schedule. And I understand, Mr. Berry, there's something just slightly special about this.
Mayor Protem, we have brought the holiday schedule for your consideration and approval. That's something that we've done over the past few years. You'll see that the holiday schedule in your packet is not changed from previous years. And generally, the holidays that are listed there are also listed in each of our four collective bargaining agreements. And so some of those extend for a number of years into the future. But we bring that to you tonight for your consideration for 2022.
All right, and any questions about this schedule?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022 holiday schedule.
One second.
It's been moved in second to approve the 2022 holiday schedule. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by the sign of aye.
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 All voted aye, so motion passes. Item C, deliberate an act on appeal to City Commission on vacant building determination for property located at 1101 South Second Street. Mr. Berry.
Mayor Protem, Commissioners, you do have in your packet an appeal to the Raton City Commission. It's submitted by Jeremiah P. Cummings and Benjamin E. Cummings. And this is in regard to a building located at 1101 South Second Street here in Raton. Now, this appeal is from a determination from the city staff that the building is, in fact, vacant and would fall under the requirements of vacant building ordinance. And I'm going to talk a little about the vacant building ordinance if you give me a minute. The vacant building ordinance was adopted by the City Commission in April of 2021, and now followed a number of public hearings and a process of talking about the vacant building ordinance. And it was adopted, as we stated at the time, in order to address the extensive issue of vacant buildings in Raton and their adverse impacts on the community and efforts to improve local economic development and community revitalization opportunities. The ordinance identified that buildings and structures which remain vacant and unoccupied for any appreciable period of time have a negative impact on surrounding properties and the community, and they contribute to blight, increases in vandalism, and arson in buildings, reduce community property values and tax base, and they require additional public services. New Mexico Main Street, in their white paper analysis of this issue states, "Unmaintained vacant commercial buildings in New Mexico commercial corridors create a negative and unwelcoming impression. Property owners of vacant commercial buildings and properties need to be held accountable for maintaining their buildings and properties. The incident of vacant commercial, industrial, and residential buildings in Raton has had the result of discouraging economic development and investment in the community, and has adversely impacted the local tax base, entrepreneurship, and job creation in Raton." In adoption of ordinance number 1012 by the Raton City Commission, the commission recognizes that vacant buildings have a significant detrimental impact on the community's economic health and opportunity, safety, and general welfare. The intent of the ordinance includes recognition of a building owner's responsibility to the community and encouragement to improve utilization of vacant buildings. Now, since we adopted this in April, we have spent, we have put some staff in place to begin notification to owners of vacant buildings of their obligation under the ordinance. The obligation is fairly straightforward. You're required to register your building with the City of Raton annually. There is a fee associated, and there is an insurance requirement associated. And so staff has tried to notify property owners. No violations have occurred. No cases have been adjudicated in this matter. There's been a reminder to owners of vacant buildings that they do have this obligation. Generally, I would state owners of vacant buildings have until the end of December to register their buildings and meet the requirements of the ordinance, as stated by staff. Now, we have notified hundreds of owners of vacant property buildings, vacant buildings in Raton. Some of those live in Raton. A few of those keep their buildings in good shape, and they're not really detrimental to the community. A lot of those buildings are not in good shape. They include numerous nuisances. They would fall under regulation of our Dangerous Building Code as well. And I would point out to the commission and to the public that in the vacant building ordinance, nuisances are not covered. That is covered under a separate ordinance. We also have a Dangerous Building Ordinance, which is a separate ordinance. And so not all vacant buildings would fall under that nuisance category, but many of them do. A lot of those buildings are owned by people who don't live in Raton. They don't regularly check on the condition of the building, maintain the building, perform those normal tasks that you would have to meet your responsibility to the community. But we've tried to draft an ordinance that we can enforce fairly across the board, and it's not subjective. It is objective in its enforcement. We are getting close to the enforcement time. We would encourage the public to become familiar with the ordinance and those people who are covered under it to get with city staff and meet their responsibility in that matter. As I've stated, we've got hundreds of vacant buildings. We have numerous hundreds of nuisances that have also been notified in this time that we've been working on this general cleanup of Raton, as well as a significant number of dangerous buildings. Now, for the commission, I would state that in recent years, we've completed our comprehensive plan of Raton. We've completed our economic development strategy. We've identified the things that we want to accomplish as far as revitalization of Raton, creating jobs, bringing businesses, bringing private investment, bringing residents to Raton. And I think we've recognized that all of these things go together. The cleanup of Raton, the abatement of nuisances, dangerous buildings, addressing the number of vacant buildings that we have. Our success in the economic development strategy depends strongly on all of those things, cleaning up Raton. We've invested in infrastructure throughout the community. We've got a lot of investment pending in the infrastructure, and we're making up for times in the past when we did not have those strategies. We didn't have that private investment or the public investment. So we've got a lot of things moving all at the same time, but they all work together. We can't do any of those things without all of those things coming together. And so naturally, a lot of the people that we've contacted about vacant buildings are unhappy to be noticed by the city that they would have a responsibility for registering the building and the other responsibilities, including paying a fee. A lot of people are unhappy about getting a notice in regard to nuisances or dangerous buildings. And we're simply reminding property owners that you do have a responsibility to the City of Raton. Now, that's a general statement, and in specific to the property at 1101, you do have a packet here. I'm not sure if we have somebody representing the ownership of that building on hand. This is their opportunity to address the commission and make their statement to you as to why they disagree with the assessment, but the assessment of staff is that is effectively a vacant building. And so you do have the appeal. I'm not in a position to speak for the owners, but I think generally, they would say that they do have a business in Raton. It is an active business. It is located at a different location. They have stated to me that this business, this building at 1101 is owned in support of the business in Raton. We don't have a dispute that they do operate an active business in Raton. The question is, is 1101 occupied? And that's the number-one criteria for determination of a vacant building, is, is the building occupied? Now, just to identify a couple of the things that we've talked about in regard to the vacant building ordinance, and Commissioners, I have given you a copy of the vacant building ordinance, and I've highlighted a couple of areas that I think would come into play on your consideration of this appeal. So on page two, we have a definition of the evidence of vacancy. And that's a lengthy list because we anticipate that there will be some discussion, disagreement, and even conflict over this determination of vacancy. And you'll see that the very first definition of vacancy is it is unoccupied or uninhabited. And we have determined that the building is unoccupied. If we flip to the next page and you go down on the list of criteria, it states, and these two would apply to a commercial building, that it could be determined to be vacant if it does not economically perform as a commercial structure would in generating income for the business or the property owner and gross receipts tax for the local government. Additionally, under the next item, that it is utilized solely for personal or private storage of vehicles, equipment, machinery, supplies, parts, or miscellaneous without an active residential, commercial, or industrial purpose. We find that this building does become vacant under those two definitions. And then what commonly we talk about in these discussions, and we've had many discussions about commercial buildings and whether they are determined to be vacant, we get a lot of comments that the building is used for storage or is used for warehousing. And so I want to address what the ordinance says about that. The definition of a storage building, if it truly is a storage building, it would not be a vacant building. A storage building means a building, structure, or complex that is specifically designed and intended for storage and is actively operated as a commercial storage enterprise. So I think we all know what a commercial storage enterprise looks like. And generally, we go back to the definition. Storage of personal equipment, vehicles, materials, or supplies in there does not make that a commercial storage facility. And then additionally, under the last definition on warehouse on the next page, warehouse means a building, structure, or complex where raw materials or manufactured goods are stored before their export or distribution for sale and is actively operated as a commercial or industrial warehouse enterprise. When we take all of those things into account, our determination is that 1101 South Second Street is a vacant building and would be regulated under ordinance number 1012. Now, just to try to summarize the statement of the property owners, I think they would tell you that they do some commercial work in the building occasionally, periodically. And formerly, there was a small engine repair business that was operated there. You had somebody on staff, a customer could stop by and talk to people, drop off their equipment, schedule service. We have not observed that that is going on currently, but I think the owners would say that occasionally that has happened in recent times, and that's their claim that it is an active operating business. And so I don't have information on how frequent that usage is, how often that is. We have not noticed any activity at the building in our time of doing this since April of 2021. And so now it comes to the City Commission. In the ordinance, the City Commission acts as a board of appeal, and anyone can bring their appeal of an administrative decision to the City Commission. So this is the first one of these that we've had, but anyone that we're talking to can come to the City Commission and state their appeal. So we have this one in front of you tonight. Your option is you can take any action in the determination of the vacancy of the building. You can set conditions for the building. You can delay any action until you, if you have questions or you need more information. But you do have some information in your packet, and I'll hold up there, Mayor Protem, and let you all discuss or answer questions if you have those.
I have one note here on page two of your appeal. It says, "We respectfully ask the City Commission to reconsider their decision and let us continue to use the building as an overflow to our essential business here in Raton." And I want to just state to the general public, this is not, this ordinance is not designed to stop use of a building. It is simply, we're trying to clean the place up, clean up our house. So registering a building is not asking you to stop using that building. So I'm not totally, I mean, I know the location of this building, and I know I've driven by, but I don't have too much else to say. We're definitely not trying to stop the use of that building. I know we are looking for improved curb appeal so that buildings don't look like they're underutilized. I don't know, is anybody... And I know that we've, you know, this is new, and we've appreciated comments and feedback from building owners. We're learning, and we may do some gentle revision to the ordinance in the future. But, you know, our motive was indeed to keep the, get the community a little cleaner. What do you think, Mr. Chavez?
Well, I...
I see you have...
Yeah, I wanted to ask the Cummings a couple of questions this evening. And one being is that how often do they actually go down there and perform? Because I've seen them open the bay doors in their low-boy trailer, take off riding moors, and saw somebody actually working on them in that building. And it says in here that they're willing to comply with everything. But I don't know too, I would like to... But I don't know too, I would like to know, are they going to continue to use it occasionally, which would make it a, because it's not, it's not a bad-looking building for
No, it's well maintained.
The aesthetic part of it, it's well maintained. And so, but that was the, one of the things I wanted to talk to them about is, and I guess I could go see them at their place of business and ask them that, but I was wondering is, how often do they do that? And, you know, it would depend on how many times a riding mower breaks down, they would have to take it down there to work on it, so. Anything?
Well, I think, personally, I think that this property is on borderline of being inhabited, but it's also borderline of being inhabited, so.
Can I ask the, can I ask the city manager, do we have to deliberate and act on this tonight, or can we still, can we put it, delay it a little bit till we get a little more information?
We can, we can take as long as you want for that. With the appeal, any action of staff would be stayed for as long as you want to study on this appeal, certainly gather more information. If the staff can provide more information to you, we are happy to do that. You have the choice of what you want to do here, but yes, you can, you can delay any action.
Well, the reason I ask you that is I wanted to find out that, and you said a minute ago that this could become a place of appeal for one, because I've noticed some buildings out there that you could not, I talked to one guy that the house is a brick building that is burned out. He said, "I'm thinking about going back in there," and I shouldn't have gotten the letter. Well, he hasn't done it in four years, and he's not going to do anything about it, actually. I really don't believe. So, but I would like to, since you mentioned that it could, a board of appeals, that we could look at these individually from time to time and not, and as long as we don't violate the ordinance that we approved in April of '21.
I drove by today, this property, and they do, they keep it maintained, you know. It doesn't look like anything going on there, but it is, the property is well-kept. I definitely do not want to discourage business in Rattone. I hope that this ordinance and some of the notices, I think, have made people upset. You know, you get that, and you feel like you're being picked on, and I think it's more than just the money. I think it's just feeling insulted when you're trying to do something good for your town. And I hate that people would feel that way. But here, you know, I think we do need to talk to them a little bit about how much they're actually there, because that, that's, I believe what Commissioner Jacomo was saying, you know, it's a borderline occupancy, where it still falls on the ordinance as vacant the way that it's being used right now. In the past, it wouldn't have, you know, when they had it running with, they had regular hours posted, and they were doing the small engine repair all the time. We're just unaware of, you know, when that's actually happening. And it doesn't have signage on it, so, you know, it just kind of, you know, you can't tell exactly what's going on there. I do think that the ordinance may need tweaking over time. I think it is a good ordinance, we have the right ideas in hand, but I hate to feel punitive towards people that are really trying
Right.
to make town better, to make their properties look nice, you know, depending on how it's being used. So I think it would be good to hear directly, more than just the letter, from these business owners and find out, you know, what their plans are, what kind of hours are they using that, and how that, how that impacts if they have plans to do more once, you know, is COVID trying to shut the business down, or has it been other problems, or, you know, what that's done. But even just having signage that it was a Little Benny's property or something might help that property as well, so.
Right.
Well, according to this, did they actually get back to, they said the city manager, you called them back, and that they said that they would comply with whatever it takes?
We talked to different people with this business, and we got mixed
Emotional.
results. So one general partner, I think, said, "Okay, I understand that we can't use it just for storage, that's generally how we're using it, and we will comply with the ordinance." The other partner did not agree with that, and subsequently, the appeal was filed. So there were different discussions on this particular building.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion then that we table this for the time being.
Postpone it.
Postpone it.
Until we're tabled.
Do we need to put a date on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we would, commissioners, and then if you have any requests for staff or information, or the property owners for information, we could communicate that to them. You had mentioned maybe you just want to, want to visit with them, and that's okay, too. But however you would like to do your information gathering, if you want to offer that to us, if we can help, we certainly will.
Yeah. I think it would be good to talk to them directly if possible, and to gather some information about how many hours it's being used, is it seasonal? How is it being operated? You know, going there every month is different than actually operating it as a business, you know, dropping in, so.
Yeah, we have a few, a few buildings that are very well-maintained, and there are a couple that deserve commendation for what they've done to the building. And they're doing what we want, but it's still
Considered.
considered an unoccupied building. So, yeah, we don't want to discourage that, but we do, I think we need to know how, what kind of hours of operation, or how often the owners are in the building in order to proceed. I mean, it's good for our fire and police to know that this is mostly empty, or, you know, stores this kind of material, and so that, you know, they're aware if there's any emergency, what's in there, so. Anyway, well, I'm sorry, do you have?
I make a motion to postpone it till further notice.
One second.
I think, I think we have
Do you have to put a date?
Yes.
Do you want to?
After the holidays?
The first meeting in January, the 11th?
Or second meeting in January?
The second meeting in January.
Second meeting in January, okay.
So in the meantime, will they?
The action will be stayed
Okay.
in the meantime.
Okay.
So I have a motion to postpone action to the second meeting in January. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to postpone action on the vacant building determination of property located at 1101 South Second. All in favor, vote for the sign of aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, motion passes. All right. Item D, deliberate and act on ratification of union contract between City of Rattone and the Rattone Firefighters Local 2378.
Mayor Protem, commission, in your packet, you do have the proposed collective bargaining agreement between the City of Rattone and IAFF Local 2378. There are some, I would say in general, we are transitioning from a contract that was based heavily on incentives for various certifications and achievements to more of a rank-determined wage type of contract. Now, I can tell you that this has been influenced heavily by minimum wage laws in New Mexico. The group does work what we call a modified Kelly schedule, so that's different than any other employee in the City of Rattone. It's very difficult to compare that to a standard eight-to-five, Monday through Friday type of schedule. That's how we meet the 24/7 demand that is on this department. And so it took us a little time to work through the terms of the agreement, but I believe we do have an agreement that as your representative in negotiations, I would recommend your consideration of this. The IAFF group has voted and approved the agreement as presented to the commission. So this would run generally through the remainder of the current fiscal year, that's to July 1st, and then two additional fiscal years. You can see that we have a wage schedule laid out, many of the work conditions that you see. We had some cleanup language, but really has not changed from previous contracts. We are mostly in that, that transition of the wage schedule. That's what we spent a lot of time talking about. I am happy to report that we did agree on that, and we bring it to the commission tonight. I would point out to the commission that under the wage schedule, you do see a term for a payment of $1,500 for each represented member for premium pay that is related to the COVID-19 response. How we would propose to cover that is through the American Recovery Act planned funds that the city has received. Upon your consideration, that payment would be scheduled for each member immediately. And so we would start, this would become effective if you favorably consider this tomorrow morning. This wage and all of the terms of this agreement would go into effect tomorrow happens to be the start of a new pay period. So we would sign this, and the terms will be in effect at that time. I'm available to answer any questions that you may have. You do have my recommendation in favor of the agreement as submitted. I would point out that part of our negotiating team on behalf of the city is here as well, Chief Burke, also our emergency manager, Dusty Russell. We do have some members of the IAFF negotiating team as well here, present, and they, it's been a process here, so I think they're interested in questions that the commission might have or your action tonight.
Do you guys have anything to say? If you do, come on up to the podium. You know, I want to tell you that I think I speak for all of us, that we are so proud of all of you and very proud of the IFU do, and just happy to have you in our community. We're really happy to have you.
I would state to the commission and to Rattone that Rattone is really the smallest incorporated municipality in New Mexico that has a full-time professional fire and emergency services department. We want to maintain this model. I think that's how we provide good service to the citizens of Rattone. Many communities that are larger than Rattone don't have this service. They may have a private ambulance service, maybe a volunteer fire department, so we're trying to maintain this, to provide that to Rattone. I think we're able to do that under the terms of this agreement. That's why we're really happy to bring this to the commission. But, you know, I think this is to serve the people of Rattone, very challenging job, very difficult, demanding job, and it's, it's continuous around-the-clock service.
Because we have this type, does it help the insurance rating that comes through the state?
It absolutely does. Rattone currently has that ISO rating of two. That's, that is in the very top percent, a very small percentage of communities nationwide can qualify for an ISO two rating. Certainly, communities that have a volunteer fire department are not going to achieve that rating. Our goal is to reach an ISO one rating. That would be the highest rating possible. We're working on that. And it's because of the investment that we've made in equipment, in facilities, in maintaining the personnel staff that we have. So that's a goal, and the community should be mindful of that because that directly affects your insurance rates for property insurance.
I definitely appreciate the vital services that you all perform in our community. I'm very pleased that you've come to an agreement, and I will make a motion to approve the union contract between the City of Rattone and the Rattone Firefighters Local 2378.
One second.
It's been moved and seconded to ratify the union contract between the City of Rattone and the Rattone Firefighters Local 2378. Can we have a roll call vote on this so we can hear all those yeses?
Sure. Mayor Protem Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
It has been passed. Thank you guys very much. We, as we have stated, appreciate their work a great deal.
Thank you, gentlemen. Do you want to come by in the morning? We'll execute the agreement and, great, sounds good.
You guys have to stay now, just because you got to stay the rest of the meeting.
Because we only have 25 more items to do.
Good job.
Good job. All right. Next item, E, deliberate and act on capital outlay funding priorities for 2022 legislative session. Mr. Bailey?
Mayor Protem, permission? This is something that we've talked about for several meetings, and in those meetings, we did reference our efforts on the Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan that was worked on over the summer, submitted to Department of Finance Administration in September. The capital improvement, or the capital outlay request is very closely tied to the ICIP that was submitted. I had previously presented a memo to the commission that outlined my recommendations to the commission for requests for capital outlay on our highest priority projects. There are a couple of things I think we want to talk about here this evening. First of all, our number one priority on the ICIP and on the memo that I have updated for you is improvements to the Lake Malloy Dam. These would be safety-related improvements that would relate to spillway improvements, spillway capacity, outlet works, rehabilitation, and potentially a dam raise. Now, we've worked over the last couple of years with the engineering firm AECom on these things. We've had the partnership of the State Engineers Office, their Dam Safety Bureau. They do have a plan for spillway improvements under their review here currently. Earlier in the year, I had given you a memo recommending a request of $10 million. I have revised that request in your, in your current memo to $30 million was what we would request from the legislature for dam improvements. So that will go pretty far on addressing the issues that Dam Safety Bureau has identified and our engineers have identified related to Lake Malloy Dam. Additionally, an item that we had talked about previously, that we have worked on over the past couple of weeks, would be related to the construction of a civic plaza facility. We looked at the Al Portel site for that. We have gone through a public hearing process, and I would say that the, the community has really responded to that request for ideas on what we would do with the Al Portel. Generally, I would put those into one of three categories. There is, we did receive comments that generally would address improvements to a building, and we had talked about improvements to the existing community center, perhaps the enlargement of our community kitchen. We're glad that a couple of businesses have started successfully by starting up in our community kitchen. I think there may be some more entrepreneurs that could use an enhanced community kitchen facility, so we would look at that as a project. And then generally, I think there are a number of comments that we received that the Outdoor Recreation Task Force, and I'll look over at Commissioner Chatterley on this, have talked about as planned improvements in the Roundhouse Park area, generally in the area of the Aquatic Center or in that general area. So we've got a lot of comments like that, that I think are in the queue, in the planning phase. I have asked for a technical assistance grant from U.S. EPA for, for outdoor recreation in general. We're waiting to hear back on that grant request. And I think that we all agree that those would be, there are a number of those things that would be good developments probably in that area. And generally, I think what's lining up for us for capital outlay would be development of a civic plaza type of concept. And so we don't have a specific design for that. I think we would have to do more planning and more effort on that. But I think for the request, I would recommend for you just that general request of half a million dollars for a civic plaza development on the Al Portel site. Commissioner Chatterley, I don't know if I could call on you for your comments in regard to some of the things we're talking about.
Absolutely. So some of the comments that I saw for the So, some of the comments that I saw for the Al Portel, we already have kind of looked at those things for Roundhouse, and we're preparing to bring them, you know, to share and get the commission's input on that, but they include things such as an outdoor amphitheater, a pump track, and, you know, some other outdoor recreation amenities, including a splash pad, possibly a water slide. But we're looking to, to have an outdoor recreation plan, to kind of look at all those things at one time. And some of those things, from an infrastructure perspective, make more sense closer to the pool. Piggybacking on the pool, or not H-back, but the chlorine system and all that would make more sense for a splash pad in that area. Not that it wouldn't be lovely to have it other places, but it, you know, financially and just from a mechanical and maintenance perspective.
And liability-wise.
Yes, liability, just to keep that, so to develop Roundhouse as more of a, the outdoor recreation kind of area. And I think that especially, as Mr. Berry was saying, that, you know, we talked with the North Central New Mexico Economic Development District who had pulled this out of our ICIP, and the legislature was looking at some kind of Civic Plaza kind of constructions, and that was one of the ideas that had come out of there, too. Not that you can't have other things incorporated into that, but I know for, being down there in Albuquerque on the Civic Plaza for the Municipal League Conference, it was, it's a really neat space, and there was still room to have a speaker and some things, but there was also, it was also could be used as an event space. It had multipurposes. I think it'd be nice to have something like that that coordinated with what we already have with Great Blocks, you know, that same kind of feeling, kind of pull that up into Third Street. So, I don't, that's kind of what it had about outdoor recreation, but yeah, I think the priorities on here look really good.
Mayor Protem, commission, if I could just kind of summarize the rest of the memo here. I've given you a recommendation that would request $1.5 million for the Barton Mesa Ranch Acquisition. This is the 2,200-plus-or-minus-acre tract that is adjacent to Sugary Canyon State Park. It would more or less fit with the Fisher Peak State Park as well. There may be another parcel that would probably ultimately try to look at as well, but this would get us in that direction of connecting with Fisher Peak State Park. I have listed a request of $1,500,000 for an evidence storage building. As we stated before, we are developing the Armex Building for an economic development project. That really is what we use for evidence storage currently. We would have that need. We've got some time to work on that. However, we hope that the, that the project at the Armex is really successful, and we need all of that room for economic development fairly soon. I've listed improvements to our drainage system and reconstruction that generally would apply to our storm drainage system in the original town site, the downtown area. We've made some progress on that over the years, but we still have a long way to go. That was, as we stated, generally constructed in the 1930s, and we still have some infrastructure in need for replacement. I put $300,000 on that item. A document storage facility is something that we talked about. When we talk about this, we also talk about a, an electronic storage of documents, too. So, but we have a lot of paper documents that really kind of impede operations here in City Hall and, I think, present some health and safety issues just by blocking halls in places that we work. $300,000 is the request there. Police works, equipment replacement, where generally we're thinking about police radio system, body worn cameras, $300,000. And just to be consistent, public works, equipment replacement, where we put down a number of $300,000 there. Generally, we're looking at equipment such as an industrial mower and a tractor, backhoe, a couple of utility trucks, multi-tool skid steer grapple truck, tree saw and stump grinder, or an industrial brush chipper. That's a summary. Certainly, commission, that's just recommendations from me. You can add to or delete from that list, increase or decrease as you would like. I would hope to get a consensus of the commission tonight. We could start filing these requests with Legislative Council Services as, at this time. The legislature will convene in the middle of January for a 30-day session, and so this will give me time to get those in and start communicating our requests to legislators.
It looks like a good motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the capital outlay funding priorities for the 2022 legislative session as outlined in this memorandum.
One second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the capital outlay funding priorities for 2022 Legislative Session. Any further discussion?
One thing on the Civic Plaza construction we talked about. I had a call just before the meeting today, and if we could put it down on the list of stuff, they want a huge carousel. So, I just thought I would let you know.
That could be fun. It could be fun.
Certainly, to the list, and we are thankful for the input of the public. We got a really strong response to that, and I appreciate the interest of the public and a lot of ideas coming out of that.
All right. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. And no opposed, so we'll move on. Motion passes. Public hearing and deliberating act on ordinance 1016 authorizing executive and delivery of loan agreement and GRT intercept agreement between the City of Raton and New Mexico Finance Authority for Cimarron Water System Project. Mr. Berry.
Mayor Protem, commission, we did introduce this ordinance at the previous meeting. We've talked about this over several meetings. This would be an opportunity for the commission to adopt the ordinance. Generally, the action would consist of financing a project from New Mexico Finance Authority for constructing and equipment improvements to the governmental unit municipal water supply system, plus the costs of issuance. This generally would entail upgrades to our Cimarron Water Supply System. As we stated then, it was constructed and came online in the early 1980s. We would be looking at replacing pumps, pump motors, pump control systems, and the communication system between the plant and various pump stations. That's generally what the improvements would consist of. Much of, all of that equipment really is original equipment, 1980s, and when you talk about technology systems from the 1980s, it's pretty hard to keep those things running this many years later. The loan agreement principal amount is $1,081,689,000. We do appreciate the terms for a disadvantaged community through this. I would answer any questions that the commission might have in regard to this. It's something that we've talked about for quite a while. I would state that improvements to the line would be scheduled to start early in 2022 and be completed in 2022.
It's good we've spent a lot of time with this already.
Yes, we have.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1016 authorizing execution delivery of loan agreement and GRT intercept agreement between the City of Raton and New Mexico Finance Authority for the Cimarron Water System Project.
One second.
It has been moved and seconded to accept an act on ordinance number 1016 authorizing executive and delivery of loan agreement between GRT intercept agreement between the City of Raton and New Mexico Finance Authority for the Cimarron Water System. This is also a public hearing. Is there any, any comment from the public present? Any additional comments from the commission? Seeing done, can we have a roll call vote?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Protem Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
All right, good. Motion passes. Thank you. Deliberating act on CDBG Grant Agreement Amendment Number Two allocating additional CDBG-VC funding for project number 19-C-N-R-I-01-Z-16. That's the only time I'm going to say that right now. Mr. Berry, do you want to?
Mayor Protem and commission, we are talking about the downtown street rehabilitation project. There is also drainage improvements in this project. As we've talked about, the construction of the project has gone on for a good part of 2021. Because of the inability to get certain materials for the project, we have taken a winter shutdown on the project. Of course, at this time of year, getting hot mix is a challenge as well. We do anticipate restarting construction in the spring of the year. We've basically got four blocks of pavement to rehabilitate. A lot of the work has been completed. Now, going back to the time that we bid the project, originally, the conceptual plan for the project goes back to 2018, 2019 time period where we applied for these funds. And in general, in bidding construction, a lot has changed since 2018 and 2019. So, as we have found out on other projects, everything's a lot more expensive here currently than what we thought it would cost back then. In the case of this project, when we bid the project, the low bid was over $92,000 higher than the available funds, and you're on the clock on a CDBG project. The important part of the CDBG project is you are ready to go, you move it forward in a timely manner, and with that basis, we did award the project with the plan to pay for the extra cost out of city funds, out of our gas tax reserve for street improvements. However, I did approach the local government division, and a number of communities did. This was a matter that went in front of the Community Development Council where a number of municipalities had the same issue as Raton did. The Community Development Council did request, did approve our request to reimburse Raton for that amount. The amount is $92,607.87, and in this amendment to the grant agreement, that additional funding would be provided through the CDBG funds to the City of Raton. So, we will have the same match that we originally talked about in the project, meet the additional cost of the project, and we appreciate the Community Development Council's consideration in funding that. Really helpful for the little town of Raton. So, that is the item.
All right, good. Any questions?
Make a motion to approve.
One second.
It has been moved and seconded to the CDBG Grant Agreement Amendment Number Two allocating additional CDBG-VC funding on project number 19-C, et cetera. All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to item H, Grant Agreement Amendment Number Three between the City of Raton, New Mexico State Aviation Division for Airport Hangar Project RTN 18-02/3.
Mayor Protem and commission, the proposal to construct an airport hangar at our municipal airport goes back to the discussion with DOS Aviation and the development of flight school here, so that goes back some years. At that time, DOS had requested a hangar to store their training aircraft, and we discussed this with State Aviation, and we did develop a grant agreement that would be for $500,000 with $250,000 provided by the City of Raton, $250,000 provided by State Aviation. Then, DOS sold to a bigger company. The bigger company decided to move the training center to Texas, somewhere in Texas where they had an existing facility, and we were kind of left holding the bag on that. We then went through a process where we asked for proposals for an air ambulance to locate at, in Raton. We did have an interested party that responded to our RFP. We negotiated a deal with them. However, well into the process, they pulled out of that. And so, the previous grant agreements were generally to extend the time in building the hangar, while we found that purpose for it. And here, we talked about the status of this with State Aviation and decided to take a bid on construction of the hangar for transient aircraft while we were looking for that economic development project. So, we did bid the project here in recent months, and again, as we stated in the last item, the bids that we received, it was a competitive process, but the bids were significantly higher than what we had planned on some years ago, and we started talking about this. We did bid two sizes of hangar. We had an alternate for a larger hangar that would house some of the aircraft to fly into Raton, and I can tell you that the bids were significantly more. I do have the amount. We are going to address this under the next item. See if I can find that item. So, the low bid for the smaller, well, for the smaller hangar was $692,200, and then to move to the larger hangar, another $105,300. And then, when we add on engineering costs to that, the project comes out to be $914,000. So, well in excess of our available funds of half a million dollars. I did approach New Mexico State Aviation and ask them what they would like to do with that. We've had some discussion over the last couple of months. They did respond with amendment number three, and they stated that they would like to proceed with the construction, build the larger hangar, and under amendment number three, they would pay the entire cost of the $914,000. The city would not have any cost in the project. And so, that's what's contained in amendment number three. Under the next item, we'll consider award of the bid for construction. If I can answer any questions on this item?
I might tell the rest of the commission that Mr. Berry's worked tedious on this to get this to happen like it is from the time we were going to Colorado Springs and talking to DOS, and so he's, he's really done a good job on getting this. Kudos to you, sir.
Thank you, commissioner.
I'm really pleased that State Aviation wanted to come in and fund the entire project. I think that's, how can you say no to that? You know, and hopefully down the line, it will become an economic development project of some sort as we continue to look for that. I'll make a motion to approve the grant agreement number three between the City of Raton and New Mexico State Aviation Division for the Airport Hangar Project RTN 1802/3.
One second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the grant agreement, amendment number three, grant amendment number three between the City of Raton, New Mexico State Aviation Division for Airport Hangar Project RTN 18-02/3. All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much, and thank you for your hard work, Mr. Berry.
Thanks, commissioners.
All right. So, the next item is quite related. Item I, Deliberating Act on Bid Award for Airport Hangar Project. Mr. Berry.
Project engineer, Molsen Corbin, has provided a bid tabulation for your information in the packet. The low bid was submitted by Archileta Construction LLC. If we add in the additive alternate number one, that is to go to a bigger hangar that would have nominal dimensions of 68-foot by 58-foot. That bid is $797,500. That is excluding New Mexico GRT, and it is their recommendation and my recommendation to award the bid to Archileta Construction LLC at that price.
Make a motion to approve the bid award for the Airport Hangar Project.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to award the bid for Airport Hangar Project to Archileta Construction. Correct? Construction, correct? All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Item J, deliberate and act on recommendation of award and approval for contract for greenhouse design and build project. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, Pro Tem and Commission, you recall that back in the 2020 New Mexico Legislature, the legislature did award a $700,000 capital outlay to the City of Raton for development of economic development building. And subsequently, the City of Raton drafted a request for proposals for an economic development project and qualifying entity as defined under the state's Local Economic Development Act statute. We did receive the one proposal from Ramel Family Farms. We have talked about that project in the past. And subsequently, the commission did enter into an agreement with Ramel Family Farms, as well as a lease agreement for the Armex Building, and also in consideration of development of an economic development building with the capital outlay funds of $700,000. Ramel had proposed to the commission that they would build a greenhouse for the growing of fruits and vegetables. And we have pursued a design-build type of procurement. We did issue a request for proposals for a design-build team recently. We did receive one proposal. The proposal generally was submitted by a team that consists of the lead engineer being Engineering Analytics, that's the firm in Raton, Archileta Construction LLC of Maxwell, and Steppy Greenhouses that produces greenhouse, I think they're in Missouri. And so that is the design-build team. We've gone through the various phases of the proposal as required by state statute. We did ask the team for the design-build agreement that you have in your packet. You'll notice in the details of that that they proposed to build two segments of the greenhouse, each are 30 feet by 108 feet. Those two structures do join, so effectively, you've got a 60 by 108-foot greenhouse, a little more than 6,400 square feet, I believe. And they have a price schedule that adds up to $700,000 in there. I would ask for consideration of this agreement in the way of an award to the design-build team of Engineering Analytics and Archileta Construction. If we get that favorable consideration from the commission, I will issue a notice of award to the design-build team. I would ask for your authority for the city manager to sign documents. The notice of award will ask for bonds and insurance to be submitted. We would expect that to happen within 10 days. We'll sign the agreement. We'll get the approval of State Department of Finance Administration. I think they would have to issue a notice of obligation to the City of Raton. And when we get the NOO, we would issue a notice to proceed. The team has proposed that they would have the greenhouse structure complete prior to July 1st of 2022. So that's a fairly fast track for this project. Of course, Ramel Family Farms would like to commence their operations in the summer of '22, so it's not fast enough for them. However, that's a pretty quick turnaround on the project.
I'm excited for this. I guess, yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the award and the contract for the greenhouse design-build project to Archileta Construction and Engineering Analytics Team, authorizing the city manager to execute the necessary documents.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve and award the grant agreement, or it's not really, it's a design. Contract, thank you. For greenhouse design-build project, allowing Mr. Berry to sign the agreement. All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye. No opposed. Yes, have it, motion passes. Thank you. We are on item K, right? Grant agreement between City of Raton and the Department of Cultural Affairs, New Mexico State Library Division for 2020 GO bond capital appropriations.
Mayor, Pro Tem and Commission, in this case, the GO stands for general obligation bonds that are sold by the state of New Mexico. You recall, on many of their ballots, you'll see a general obligation bond question for things like higher education, senior center, and libraries. The public generally approves those bonds, and some of that money does flow to the Raton Arthur Johnson Memorial Library. So you do see that grant agreement in your packet, and that's what it's in relation to. Let me thumb through the agreement real quick, and I'll try to find the amount that we're talking about. Give me one minute. Michael Ann probably knows this right off the top of her head.
It's like $14,000.
There you go. Okay.
I've been trying to find it in there, too.
So that is what you would be accepting in the way of general obligation bond. It's generally something that is made available annually to our library, and it really helps the operation of our municipal library. So we would ask for your consideration and approval of the grant agreement.
So, Mo.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the grant agreement between the City of Raton and the Department of Cultural Affairs, New Mexico State Library Division for 2020 GO bond capital appropriations. All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
No opposed. So motion passes. Thank you. Item L, deliberate and act on resolution 2021-70, allocation of American Rescue Act funding for RPS hardship waivers and eligible citizens for electric metering upgrades. And thank you for the RPS people for sitting around waiting for this item. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, Pro Tem and Commission, I'm really happy that this item came up because pretty much as we go down the agenda, I made some people stay for the meeting, and they're going to give their presentations to the commission. And I'll do less talking, and they will do more of the talking. So under this resolution, 2021-70, the commission would consider allocation of American Rescue Act funding. The commission is allowed to transfer funds to a special purpose unit of local government. RPS would qualify for that. Additionally, an eligible use would be for relieving hardship to homeowners or utility ratepayers that are affected by the COVID-19 pandemic or the financial effects of the pandemic. And what I would anticipate here is that we have listed the amount of $75,000 of those ARPA funds. That's out of generally the 1.4 million that was awarded to the City of Raton to go to this use. It would pay for electrical service upgrades that are necessary to ratepayers that lack the ability to pay for upgrades. That would be necessary to implement the smart meter system, the AMI system that RPS has largely put into effect. However, we have a number of these. I would kind of estimate that we could help out 40 to 45 homeowners with this $75,000. But I would like to call on David Piancino, General Manager of RPS, to, because a lot of this electrical stuff is out of my realm. So David, you can give us the facts here.
First, I'd like to thank you for the monies. I know our ratepayers are in need of it. I'd like to start off, about five, four or five years ago, I started sending letters out to the people that have the A-Base style meters. These were meters that were starting to be replaced probably in the late '70s, early '80s. And these people haven't gone around to upgrading them, mostly because they haven't had trouble with them before. Out of sight, out of mind. It's usually not until the metering setup goes out completely that they know that they have a problem. Most people don't even know where their meters are at until there's a problem. When we started the new AMI metering setup, this was to bring more accuracy and less time with our men out in the fields. You know, as we know that when you walk into somebody's backyard, you never know whose backyard you're walking into, who's inside the house, what's going on inside that house. So that brings safety to our men that had to read before. Disconex, we're starting to get kind of hairy, too. You know, when we disconnect people for non-payment, again, we had to walk up to the house. What's going on inside that house? We don't know. The A-Base style meters, some of the meters that I've seen, they've been as far as old as probably installed in the '40s, '50s. '60s might be some of the newer A-Base style meters. At that time, in the '60s, what did you have on inside your house? One TV, that was about it. Micro waves didn't exist. So as we come throughout the decades, more load, more power is being consumed inside the houses. The A-Base style meter, the wiring, the insulation has started to deteriorate over the years, and the wire was undersized. That will be upgraded also. As I've sent the letters out before, now John T. Abaza has taken over that task for me. We have come across quite a few people that couldn't afford it before, let alone, you know, this is a big surprise. We don't ever plan on that. You know, as we go out to our vehicles, we see our tires. If we glance at our tires, well, okay, that'll wait another year or so. As I stated before, their services, a lot of people don't even know where they're at on their house, let alone how much it's going to cost to have it replaced, and start budgeting for something like that. So this is where we're going to implement this money, on the people that have been affected by COVID, and the people that are in need as far as the hazardous side of that, as well as their financial stability. And I'd like to thank Scott Berry for the extra work that I'm going to have to go through. So it's not just about the accuracy of the meter, but it's also about the hazards, not just only that household, but the properties around it all as well. And if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
I think it sounds like a good use of some of that funding.
Yes. Yes, definitely. We have some customers out there that would be very appreciative of it.
As I understand it, you will have more work because you have to create criteria and whatnot for awarding that funding. Is that correct?
Yes, definitely. And then Scott and Michael Ann have both offered their services, too. So what I think I'll be doing is drafting up something and running it past them, make sure we're in compliance.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2021-70, the allocation of the American Rescue Act funding for the RPS hardship waivers.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution 2021-70. All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
No opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, and thank you guys for your hard work and for waiting for this item to come out. All right. Item M, deliberate and act on resolution 2021-71, authorizing purchase of ambulance utilizing HGAC contract and funds awarded for the American Rescue Act funding. Thank you guys for hanging around. I know that's what you're here for. Thank you.
Mayor, Pro Tem and Commission, I understood this item similar to the last item. You do have a resolution. It would consider the commission action to allocate American Rescue Act funding, this time for purchase of a local ambulance. The local ambulance, and I would call on our fire and emergency manager here tonight to give you the details. But I understand it would be equipped with the current technology to handle the COVID-19 pandemic. We, in our memo to the commission, did note that this would be an eligible expense, again, under the medical transportation allowance. I would like to call on you gentlemen to come up and give us the presentation on the ambulance. I do have a quote here that we could lock in with your consideration tonight. Cost of this is quoted to us at $369,478 under this contract that was mentioned. Dusty.
It's very expensive, I know. Because of COVID, everything has gone up. They can't get parts and pieces, so that's part of the reason why it's so expensive. But with this ambulance, we are going to be replacing one of our older first-out ambulances that, as it's been to the shop, we've been told, it's going to die any day. So it's something that has been needed. With COVID coming into the picture, this unit now will have a ultraviolet filtration system built in. So that will also help with the COVID precautions that we have to take as well. So one thing that we also have done with this quote is we have included a new defibrillator and a power girdling for this truck. So it's going to be equipped with everything, and we're going to spend minimal dollars when it gets here. And my biggest hope here is with the ambulance that we've pretty much built like this, that we can remount this ambulance at least two to three times, to where it's maybe $100 grand instead of $300 grand every time. So that's the positive of this ambulance here. So.
It's a seven-month wait on the order?
Correct. This one is a demo, but it is exactly like I was wanting to build it. There's one or two things that I didn't want, but I'm living with it just because it would be about 16 to 18 months before we would have an ambulance. So with the other one getting ready to go out, I couldn't chance it.
Yeah. And this one's equipped with the ultraviolet light.
Correct.
Yeah, that's really nice.
And the filtration system. So any questions?
Like you said, everything's more expensive, and then as technology evolves.
Correct.
It also has a cost as well.
Correct.
I like the idea of being able to, like you said, remount it and see.
Right. And that was one thing that I've looked at and talked with the sales reps with our current ones, and it's not recommended with any of them. So when our other first-out ambulance starts to die as well, I might be back for more, but we'll see what happens there.
Very good. I entertain a motion.
I make a motion to adopt resolution 2021-71, authorizing the purchase of ambulance utilizing HGAC contract and funds awarded from the American Rescue Act.
I'll second.
Very good. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 2021-71, authorizing purchase of ambulance utilizing HGAC contract and funds awarded from the American Rescue Act. Any additional comments? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
I just know it's.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. You know, when we were, I was talking to Mr. Berry earlier, he said, I'm sorry, it's kind of a long agenda. And I said, well, at least we can get to U, meaning item U. And he looked at me like, huh? We learned going to R, so we don't have to go to SDU. So item N, deliberate and act on resolution 2021-72, declaring surplus vehicles and equipment.
Mayor, Pro Tem and Commission, you have the resolution that lists the proposed surplus vehicles and equipment owned by the City of Raton. This has been put together by the city clerk. She's available to answer any questions that you have. We are talking about a number of vehicles and equipment that go back to, it looks like, 1974, well-used equipment. 1974, well-used equipment. I would not count on getting a lot of money for this. Generally, I would say we're looking at scrap value for everything that you see here. We would ask for your consideration, and Michael Ann can give you additional information or answer your questions.
That's fine. I just wanted to mention that I did notice a typo. If you look underneath the list, it should say, "Equipment are no longer needed for the operations of the City of Raton." So I'll correct that on the final one that gets signed. My apologies for that.
No worries, it's a small typo.
But yes, I do stand for any other questions that you may have on this request to dispose surplus vehicles. So we are moving forward with our efforts. We've talked about this for quite some time. We do have a lot of old equipment, vehicles, police vehicles. A lot of them truly are just salvage value, so we did just haul off, I believe it was six of the old Crown Victorias, and those went to salvage. So as the city manager stated, most of this may be the same. We do have to make sure, even on a salvage vehicle, that we have all of the titles in place, and so we'll pull together all of the records once this is approved, and either do scrap metal, take sale bids, or auction the equipment.
Very good. Looks pretty straightforward. Any questions?
Make a motion to approve resolution 2021-73, declaring surplus properties and authorizing it to be donated or to other public agency.
Commissioner Jacom, I think we're on -72, but perhaps we can, they're pretty similar.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2021-72, declaring surplus vehicles and equipment.
One second. Very good. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 2021-72, declaring surplus vehicles and equipment. All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. There are no opposed. Moving on to resolution 2021-73, declaring surplus property and authorizing to be donated to another public agency. Antonucci.
So Mayor Protim and Commissioner, in your packet, this is a similar resolution, but it is specific to two of the 2010 Ford Explorers that we no longer need for the department, since we've actually invested in quite a few new vehicles. We also have quite a few vehicles that need to be salvaged. The chief has been in contact with the Mora County Sheriff's Department that would have a use for these two vehicles, so this would be a government-to-government transaction, and it does require the approval of the local government division prior to proceeding with the donation of these vehicles to Mora County. But that would be our recommendation for your approval this evening.
Any questions for Michael Ann?
No, and make a motion to adopt resolution 2021-73.
One second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 2021-72, declaring surplus property and authorizing it to be donated to another public agency. All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Motion carries. Deliberate and act on resolution number 2021-74, adopting travel policy relating to reimbursement and travel for per diem and mileage expenses for public officers and employees of the city while of unofficial city business. Santiucci, I'm guessing you're going to explain this one.
Mayor Protim and Commissioner, this particular item is still kind of in draft form and is not ready for your consideration this evening. We would request that it be postponed till the first meeting in January. At that time, we could bring the final version of that policy to you for approval.
Very good. I'll make that motion. All right, it's been moved. Is there a second to postpone? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to postpone resolution 2021-74. All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Are declared by postpone till, you said the first meeting in January?
Yes, January 11.
Okay. Item Q, we're almost done, Home Stretcher, deliberate and act on resolution 2021-75, budget adjustment number five, FY '22.
Mayor Protim and Commissioner, if I could real quickly, on the previous item that we had this evening on the GO bond for the library, after looking at the document that was in your packet, it appears that it was a double-sided document, and then when it got ran through the copier, you're missing every other page. So I've made new copies for you. The actual amount of that grant is 14,982,04. So I'll get these to.
It wasn't just me, huh?
Our deputy clerk, if you'll take one and pass those down. And then I've got one for Marty also. That way you have the complete document. So going back to the budget adjustment, some of these items were on the agenda earlier this evening, mainly the airport project. So we're pleased that they're going to pick up 100% of the funding on the hangar project, which means I can adjust the amount of the budgeted match, which was 250,000. We did have a few reimbursement requests prior to the approval of this amendment with state aviation, so we'll probably have to work that out to try to get reimbursed for the amount of the match that we had already committed for that. So I'll work out the accounting with them on that, and then we'll transfer those funds back to the general fund as soon as we can. Other than that, I do have some line item adjustments. And then with respect to the CDBG project, at the last meeting, we did do an increase in temporary transfers. That was necessary because as the project progresses, the city has to pay the contractor, we have to supply a canceled check, and then request reimbursement. We're probably two reimbursement requests away from getting the reimbursement, so we're going to have to increase that temporary transfer that we were seeking in order to be able to cover these expenses until we can get the reimbursement. So I am looking to increase that. I think if we increase it to the 600,000, we won't have to come back again. So other than that, we did pay off the New Mexico Finance Authority loan for the police vehicles, and the actual payment for the loan isn't due until May, but because we get our LEPF distribution in July every year, the funds were there to pay it off sooner. So that would give us the opportunity, if sometime in the fiscal year, we needed to go out for financing again, which I don't foresee at this point, but if we did, we would have that option available to pledge those LEPF funds again. I believe during the DFA Budget Conference recently, they did go over the changes that are going to go into effect in July with regards to LEPF. And actually, the allotment that we get annually is going to increase significantly, which would probably eliminate the need for smaller communities to have to get these reoccurring loans to purchase three or four vehicles at a time. So we think that will definitely benefit our police department, as well as other agencies across the state. If we look again at the airport, we just completed the pavement rehab project, and so when we initially were awarded these grants, they did have a match component to them, but as the city manager had reported earlier, all of these were 100% funded with federal and state funds. So these are just kind of cleaning up the budget for matching funds that we had budgeted originally. So other than that, like I said, the rest of them are just kind of line item adjustments, pretty straightforward. Is there any questions?
Definitely appreciate your work on all that. Make a motion to approve resolution 2021-75, budget adjustment number five for fiscal year '22.
One second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution 2025-75, budget adjustment number five, FY '22. All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. There are no opposed. Motion passes. And so we didn't get to you, but we got to R, so, Mr. City Manager, take your time and give us a report.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Commissioner Javis said he wanted a detailed report, so.
He wants a pillow as well.
I did attend the City Managers Association Winter Conference in Albuquerque. That was December 1 through December 3. City managers, finance officers, and city attorneys had met, and a lot of that was about legislative agenda coming up. There are changes going on with the self-insurers fund as far as property insurance, some liability insurance things, and then the safety program or workman's comp as well. So we've got a lot of good information there, and some things we brought back that are actionable. One of the pieces of information that we did receive prompted us to increase that capital outlay request for Maloya Dam significantly, as we talked about earlier, so some good information there. But we have commenced construction on the Railroad Depot Parking and Drainage Project. That's something that we had awarded some time back. We had prioritized the CDBG project, however, we've taken a winter shutdown. A lot of the work would be earthwork or concrete work, so that is underway. Like the rest of our paving, there would be asphalt paving involved in this project. We would anticipate late spring, early summer, until we could complete that, but the work is underway. We will have periodic closures of the parking lot as we proceed with construction through the winter. Myself and the Public Works Director did inspect the airport runway pavement restoration project that the city clerk had mentioned. The work is complete now. That was crack sealing and seal coating on our primary runway 220 and our crosswind runway 725. So that project looks good. We did cross one off the list, except for the paperwork part. And then lastly, I did attend the exit conference today with the Mayor Protim, the city clerk, and other representatives, and we, our independent auditor, Carl Riggs at Ingram, told us that they would submit the audit report to the state auditor tomorrow, by the end of the day tomorrow. And they also cautioned us that we really can't talk about the findings in the report until the state auditor has done their review and authorized us to discuss those. So at some point later on, Carl Riggs at Ingram will summarize that to the city commission when the state auditor gets through their review process. So just to notify you that the exit conference has been held. Some metal will take place tomorrow, and then we'll start talking about next year's audit immediately. That's all I have, Mayor Protim.
Very good. Is there any other business to come before this meeting?
I wish everyone Merry Christmas.
That's right.
Good.
Yes, Merry Christmas.
Happy New Year.
Even the farming.
Happy Hanukkah. Is that still, I think still, I think this is the, this week, right? Well, anyway, happy holidays to all. Oh, we're a joke.